Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission on February 13th. As all of you may know, we will also have a section of this meeting, the bulk of it, that will be serving as the telecommunications review board. But we need to open the meeting as the Planning Commission and do some administrative things. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Moved by Stephen, seconded by Jean. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the agenda as stated?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Next is the approval of minutes from January 23rd. Take a motion to approve those.
I'll move those as well.
Moved by Stephen, seconded by Megan. Any discussion?
No, I didn't see anything. It looked good to me.
Hey, Stephen, how are you? So nice.
Didn't see that coming. Yeah. Wow, awesome.
Shazam.
Can we get another? Sure. And then move Kate.
We can share.
Sure. You want to go here?
Either way.
Yeah, no, whatever works for you guys. Want to just share it? Okay, so we're looking at the meeting minutes from January 23rd. I did have one comment on the second page. After the bullets, starting with my name. My suggestion is to strike part of that sentence so that it reads, "Jason Grignan urged the neighbors to attend future discussions on this topic." I don't know if in -- I re-watched and I don't know that I specifically mentioned DRB at that point, but generically, it was for any future topics.
Sure. I believe you did, but from my recollection.
I did at one point, but the way that this reads is misleading, I think.
I will amend my motion. I will accept that amendment to my motion.
Good with that? Okay. All right. Any other comments on the minutes? Oh, you weren't here, right? Yeah, so we're good. Okay. All in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
With Stephen abstaining. All right. Are there -- from a Planning Commission's side, the disclosures are, I don't believe, relevant, but are there any? No.
No.
Okay. Then we have an open-to-the-public session for anything not on tonight's agenda. Did anybody have any comments unrelated to the telecommunications review board? Seeing none. Okay. Well, then, we're going to move into the telecommunications review board. And I hereby open this public hearing warrant for application TEL 20-01. The Planning Commission, serving as the telecommunications review board per the Shelburne Telecommunications Ordinance, will consider the application -- and I meant to ask ahead of time. Is it -- I just want to make sure I pronounce your name right.
Thank you. It's Zachary Manganello.
Manganello. Okay. Thank you. Will consider the application by Zachary Manganello, who seeks approval for two guy-supported antenna support structures 70 feet tall capped by 14-foot mast and horizontally-mounted ham radio antenna pairs at 4450 Dorset Street. Now, to the members of the TRB, or refer to the telecommunications review board that way. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications to be disclosed?
None.
No.
And just in review, the ex parte communications or anything relating to this matter, any discussions relating to this matter between any of us and any parties involved with this proceeding?
Nope.
Okay. All right. And to the audience, if you haven't already, anyone who plans to participate, and even if you're just here, I'd ask you to sign in and provide contact information so we know who's here. And anybody, when the time comes, those wishing to speak must be recognized by the chair. That's me. I'll swear you in. And everybody has to use the microphone because this is being recorded and streamed. And the audio is needed for that. So per the town's telecommunications ordinance, the TRB is governed by two sets of rules, which we will be following. These two documents are the Rules of Procedure and Conflict of Interest Policy and the Rules of Discovery and Evidence. Before we begin, I'm just going to run through the order of events per Section 8 of the Rules of Procedure, just so we're all on the same page. This process is a little different from the Planning Commission, so it needs to be explained. So first, I'll invite board staff to comment on the application. Then we'll accept and/or acknowledge the material that we've received. Then the applicant and representative will present the application, targeting roughly 30 minutes. Then we'll invite questions from board members. Then we'll invite other persons who may have information to present regarding this application. And in this case, it's information intended as evidence. Then we'll invite the applicant to respond to any of the information presented. Then we can invite additional questions from the board. Then it would be open to questions from the public. And then we'll allow final comments from the applicant and/or the board. And then, based on where we are, we would likely enter a deliberative session, or we may just extend the hearing, depending on where that is. So with that, I invite board staff, which is Dean, to comment on the application.
I guess I would ask, do I need to be sworn? Should I be?
Probably. Okay. So do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I will be the truth, yes.
Excellent.
I do.
All right.
I'm going to assume that members of the board have reviewed the staff report that was included in the packet and was also shared with the applicant. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have before I say anything more, if there are any. I'd boil down what was included in the staff report to something that might be fairly obvious, which is basically, "Don't be afraid to ask questions," particularly about things like the propagation study. In my experience, laypeople who encounter computer applications like the one that is at the heart of the propagation study, which is a program called VOACAP, or I guess Voice of America CAP, laypeople have a tendency to treat those types of programs as black boxes. And they tend to give deference to the people that run those programs. And so I'd like to encourage board members to ask questions that, in a sense, have the applicant take the lid off the box. That way that you perhaps can understand the basic principles of the program, its key assumptions, and the possibility of errors. Oh, and by noting a couple of things that I learned this afternoon that may be relevant. The first is that there's a page on a website called VOACAP.com called "Ten Common Mistakes in Using VOACAP." So it would appear mistakes are at least possible when using the program, and that's one key reason why asking questions is important. And the other thing I learned this afternoon is that today of all days is World Radio Day.
There you go.
#WorldRadioDay.
Excellent.
That's appropriate.
All right. Now, to Brian, is it your intention to have the application submitted as evidence?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Are there any objections to that?
No.
Seeing none? Okay. Let's see. So we've received the application, as well as a summary from the town's technical consultant, James Stitt, who will be joining us via phone closer to 8:00, I believe, as well as a packet of roughly 13 different viewpoints of the project location from the town's aesthetic consultant, Michael Boucher, who, my understanding, is on his way here and probably closer to 7:30 or so. So now, turn the floor over to you to present the application.
Thank you. I'm Brian Sullivan of MSK Attorneys in Burlington. To my right is the applicant, Zachary Manganello, who introduced himself a minute ago. And to his right is Louis Hodges of the firm of Dubois &amp; King. Louis was the person responsible for preparing our set of photo simulations, which is in the packet that you have. Louis is also absolutely crucial to our endeavor tonight because he's running our PowerPoint presentation. That was a cue. We should have practiced that. We've got to do things by the book.
That's right. This is our biggest challenge tonight. We're doing all right.
Right.
I think what will happen is that it will be usable if you -- Right. It just has limited functions, but you're not editing, so.
I think all we need to do is display. We're not editing on the fly here.
Next to the -- yeah. No, no, no. Go down, go down to -- no. Go down into the red dot one.
There it is. There we go.
We'll have to start paying John.
Normally it works.
Slight technological hiccup there. So this is the cover slide, obviously, for the application. K1ZK, for anybody who doesn't know, is the federally assigned call sign that Zach has as part of his licensure. So I assume that this board has probably never heard an application for an amateur radio station, and I'm guessing you may not have heard any telecommunications applications. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just not presenting evidence, but just in the form of summary, going to give a little background on the way amateur radio stations are regulated, and also some of the differences between amateur radio and cellular networks, which tend to be the bulk of the applications that come before Vermont municipalities and was apparently the focus of the telecommunications ordinance that you have. So first off, we start with the federal regulations that are codified at 47 CFR, Section 9715. This came about as a result of Federal Communications Commission proceeding in 1985. The result of that proceeding is a ruling that's referred to as PRB-1. You probably saw that in our materials. You might have seen it in some background reading if you did it. Basically, PRB-1 was the FCC's ruling on how best to balance the interests of the amateur radio community versus the state and local regulatory community. So the upshot of that is this language right here, which has two important components tonight. You have to, you, as the representatives of the town of Shelburne, must reasonably accommodate the plans that Zachary has for his amateur radio station. And if you do impose conditions, regulations, they must be the minimum practical to accomplish your authority's legitimate purpose. So we are starting at a, probably a different starting point than you do with cellular tower applications. Next slide, please. Vermont, interestingly, and I don't know the background to this, but a few years ago, Vermont actually adopted this in-state statute. So in the 24 VSA, which is the volume where most of the zoning laws are found, the Vermont legislature specifically adopted the provision of 47 CFR 9715 that I just read, excuse me, and even clarified it a bit by saying that the municipal ordinance shall comply, "shall" meaning must, with that section of CFR by allowing the erection of an amateur radio station antenna or an amateur radio antenna support structure, which the two towers are, at a height and dimension sufficient to accommodate amateur radio service communications. So there's mandatory language in there. Go ahead, Louis. And then to summarize, in the supplement that was prepared by another attorney who's an amateur radio operator that I just kind of edited a bit, there are several cases that were mostly in federal courts, but some from state courts, and there are a few principles from them that I think are relevant to this proceeding. First of all, the cases are clear that municipal ordinances that attempt to impose fixed height limits are void. The height limit cannot be fixed. Also, setback requirements, meaning the distance between the base of the tower and nearby property lines or nearby natural features like ponds and wetlands, those are also void to the extent that they're in excess of the height of the tower. That kind of goes to the legitimate regulatory purpose. There's a legitimate purpose to protect neighboring residents from a tower falling on their property, but it's not legitimate when, for example, the setback is approximately four times the height of the tower, as in this case. The excessive setback, and I'm using your consultant, Mr. Stitt's, language, the excessive setback can also make it practically impossible for someone to locate one of these towers on their property. I think Louis can speak to this, but I think if those 300-foot setbacks were applied, there basically would not be a spot on this 10-acre parcel that would satisfy them.
Correct. The setbacks overlap almost a person.
And the same thing with restrictions as to zoning district. Because these amateur stations are typically connected to the amateur's house, the municipality cannot just exclude all residential districts, for example. The telecommunications ordinance you have, I believe, limits telecommunications facilities to a couple of the industrial districts. That also, in the context of amateur radio, is void. And the cases also recognize that the typical way in which municipal and state regulatory bodies function, you know, balancing interests, weighing, for example, the desirability of a certain height of the tower to achieve a radio signal objective versus the aesthetic impacts, the courts hold that you can't really engage in that balancing in that way. As they put it, "That was already done by the FCC when they issued that ruling in PRB-1." The town must accommodate the objectives of this particular ham. Ham is a slang term for amateur radio operator. I mean, this is, I should say, amateur radio was something that was very popular in the mid to late 20th century. I don't know how widespread it is, so I'm kind of assuming that you don't have familiarity with it. But I'm seeing some nodding heads, so I guess some people do have familiarity. So it's not just enough to say a reasonable amateur radio operator should be happy with this height. It has to be that the height and the antenna selection has to accommodate the objectives that this ham operator has. Then there's also a case from Texas, which is cited in our supplement. It's called Snook versus Town of Missouri City, in which the court, federal court in the Southern District of Texas, held that a 75% to 90% success rate for transmitting and receiving signals is reasonable. And we'll see, when Zach goes through the application and the work that was done for him by his consultant, that the height of the towers and the antenna setup that he's asking for is going to be more like 60% successful. Go ahead, Louis. So this was my attempt to distinguish from cellular communication. Obviously, this is not a commercial operation. This is an individual operating out of his home. He's not broadcasting as such. He's engaged in two-way communications, and as Zach has pointed out, he's often listening at least as much, if not more, than he's talking. And unlike a cellular network, which is basically either always on or always on when somebody picks up their phone, Zach's station is only on when he's there to operate it. So when he's at work all day, it's not on. This is what's known as point-to-point communications, not trying to use a network the way a cell provider does. Instead, Zach is trying to speak to other amateur operators, could be as close as Shelburne, could be somewhere else in the United States, could be in other parts of the world. And as such, he's not trying to cover an area the way a cellphone provider tries to cover a certain swath of land, you know, to make sure that all of their subscribers can access the network. He's very much trying to propagate his signal and receive incoming signals from various locations. Amateur radio, as you see in some of our materials, is often the kind of last resort for emergency communications. For example, if a cellular network relies on electric power, or if it even has backup generators and the fuel runs out, then the amateur radio station is often the only way to get messages out. Zach can speak to his particular experiences doing that. Next slide, please, Louis. Amateur radio also operates on a wide range of frequencies, including ones that are what we used to call short wave, that allow propagation for thousands of miles all around the earth. Again, I'm not going to talk about the technical details. Zach can handle that. Typically, those frequencies, short wave, known by amateurs as HF, high frequency, are actually low in the frequency spectrum compared to other frequencies. And for reasons that Zach can explain, those lower frequencies typically require longer antennas. So the antennas he's proposing look like your kind of old-school TV antennas. They're horizontally mounted, and the antennas or the elements of the antenna come out kind of perpendicular to that horizontal mount. Cellular antennas, as you've seen probably, if you've looked at towers, they're typically vertically oriented. They tend to be kind of thick. Typical dimensions of one of those is six feet long and about a foot wide. These are much thinner. And I already touched on, these frequencies and the type of equipment that Zach has and the type of license that Zach has allows him to engage in long-distance and international And his equipment is in his house. Unlike a cell site, he's not got an external shelter that houses the electronics. That is referred to in the telecom ordinance, but it's not present here. He doesn't have an external generator just dedicated to the running of his station. Cell sites typically do. Cell sites typically require, at least in the more rural areas, the construction of an access road so that the technician can drive there in all kinds of weather and do maintenance to the site. This is not a consideration here because Zach's site's in his house. He also does not require a dedicated power line the way a cell site does. For reasons that have to do with the fact that he's not co-locating antennas from other operators, and also because his antennas, as I said, are kind of those horizontal, kind of lighter-weight models, that allows the towers to be thinner. They don't have to be the monopole kind of beefy towers, the nearest of which I would refer you to is there's one at Shearer Chevrolet, which I think is in South Burlington, and there's one at the Channel 3 Studios on Joy Drive, which is definitely in South Burlington. Those are both monopole towers. They are opaque. This lattice tower allows light to pass through it and is much thinner. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Zach Manganello.
And before you get going, can I just swear in?
Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
Well, hello, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. I don't think we, any of us have met, so I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Zach Manganello, and I thought I'd just run you through a couple of slides. I don't want to kill anybody by PowerPoint, but just tell you a little bit about my application. I thought I'd start by saying a little bit about what ham radio is. I heard some people here are familiar with it. Maybe some people who aren't, I'll just give you a brief overview. This is not CB radio, the old citizens' band radio. It is a different radio service. And what I've written there is that we've sort of been involved in more than 100 years of experimenting. The hobby is still relevant today. Many of us are involved in all kinds of technical pursuits in this hobby. It's one of the reasons that I got into a technical study field in college. And it's valuable, as Brian mentioned, for emergency communications. Also, it's just a lot of fun. So as I've written up there, it's really, in my view, two things. It is a federally regulated and licensed voluntary, non-commercial communication service. This is what the Federal Communications Commission's regulations in Part 97 are all about. And the FCC really has a list of different things that its views amateur radio as being involved in, including public service, advancement of what it calls the "radio art," building communication and technical skills, training operators, technicians, and electronics experts, and enhancing international goodwill, since this is a radio service that can reach across international borders. My other take on it is that it's just, it's an engaging hobby as well as a service. You can learn about physics, electronics, science, technology, engineering, mathematics. You can make friends. You can practice foreign languages with other people speaking different languages. This hobby also sort of has a crossover with short wave listening. A lot of people enjoy listening to what's happening on the short wave band, listening to signals from around the world, listening to unusual things sometimes. Maybe you've heard about the number stations broadcasting codes of numbers repeatedly and trying to figure out what they are. DXing refers to distance communications, long distance, trying to hear signals from far away, including signals from space. I've been lucky enough to talk to an astronaut using amateur radio. Collecting or designing and building equipment, including the electronics and antennas and feed lines, and learning all about what's necessary to construct a station. And you can also take it with you on your vacation to a warm tropical beach if you've had enough of Vermont's cold winter, or to a mountaintop. You see a picture there. It's a picture of my existing station in 2018, showing some of the interactions now that we've been using, plugging radios into computers and taking advantage of a lot of the computing power that allows us to do new things with our frequency allocations. Next slide. So a little bit about me. I don't want to really make this too much about me, but I'll tell you a little bit about me. There's a picture of my FCC radio license. Again, the call letters I've been assigned are K1ZK. And I got my first license in 1994 at age 14, and maybe that was back in the time when amateur radio was more popular than it is today. I don't know if the popularity has gone up or down since then, but I was interested in the young age because my stepdad is also an amateur radio operator, and I was fascinated with the postcards he had on his wall from people he had talked to all over the world and the fact that he knew Morse code. So the FCC has what's called incentive licensing. You have to pass tests to get different levels of amateur radio license. And I did that back in the '90s, progressing through all five levels of licensure at the time, to the highest level of amateur radio license, including demonstration of knowledge about technical principles, as well as Morse code proficiency at 20 words a minute. When I was also a teenager living in Maine, the ice storm hit. I don't recall if it hit here in Vermont, but it did in Maine. And it knocked out power and communications where I was in Maine across, you know, many, many towns. And I had recently gotten my radio license. I guess it was four years before that. And immediately, the Red Cross sent me out to shelter in a nearby town, and I was the sole link of communications from that Red Cross shelter to the Red Cross headquarters in Portland, Maine. My interest in electronics led me to study physics in college. I got my degree in 2003. My wife and I lived in, or my now-wife, we were then dating. We lived in Shelburne in 2003 and 2004. I've since, we've since made our home in Vermont. I've been involved in multiple ham radio activities since then, including public service, emergency communications, international communications, experimentation, and training other radio operators. There's a picture of me. That's actually up on top of a mountain, Gore Mountain in New York State, with a team of radio amateurs doing VHF. New York State, with a team of radio amateurs doing VHF communications. They call this wireless. There were a lot of wires up there. We had a great time. Next slide. Why these two support structures? And basically, from my materials, I described four general areas of what I'm trying to accomplish, one being public service and emergency communications, like what the FCC has talked about, two, international communications. It is just a whole lot of fun to talk to people in different countries, three, experimentation, and four, training and education for myself and for others. My proposal is to improve functioning in all four of those categories with better antennas and antenna heights than I currently have. I'll share with you now that I currently, or currently have a 30-foot-tall lattice-type structure at my current home. We're about, we're going to be selling that this year. And I've sort of reached the limit of what I'm able to accomplish with that structure, and I'm looking to improve my capabilities and improve the capabilities of the station. So the height I'm requesting is because, for sort of technical reasons, I won't, I'll try not to be too technical, but one is I'm trying to put up a gain antenna. Brian described these TV antenna, like antennas, which are the shape they are because they provide gain, they provided an ability to point the array in different directions on an azimuth. I'd like to have a gain antenna in the 7 megahertz band. And for technical reasons, those, the antennas generally work if they're at least a half wavelength above the ground. They work best when they are that height. Otherwise, you have reflections and absorption into the ground that compromise the antenna's functioning. So to get a gain antenna on that frequency, which I'm authorized to use under my license, and to get a 7 megahertz antenna about a half wavelength off the ground, that is on the order of 60 or 70 feet, so that's why I wanted to get an antenna at least that height up for one antenna.
Can you run through the calculation of how you get from 7 megahertz to 60 or 70 feet?
Oh, man. Trying to remember back to my physics classes and the derivation of the equation.
It doesn't have to go that far. I just meant converting frequency to wavelength.
Frequency and wavelength are related by the speed of light. And so a 7 megahertz antenna is approximately a 40-meter wavelength, which is, when you consider it, you think we have electromagnetics everywhere in our lives these days. We see in the light spectrum, but that is a very, very short wavelength. This is, 7 megahertz is a very, very long wavelength, certainly much bigger than the human body. So this is not, you know, it's short wave. It is, we call it short wave, but it's a little bit of a misnomer. It is a big 40-meter-long wavelength. So a half wavelength at 40 meters is approximately 20 meters or somewhere around 60 feet. The other, the reason I want to have two structures at this height is because not only do I want to get one antenna up at that height to make it function, but I'd also like to get a 14-megahertz antenna and some other antennas up higher. And if you, as you saw in the materials, as these types of antennas are raised higher and higher off the ground, they're, what they call the "takeoff angle" is reduced. And basically, that means that as the antenna goes up, the direction the antenna looks comes down, it points more towards the horizon, which is super essential for trying to talk to stations that are very far away. Because of the mechanics of ionospheric propagation, signals coming from a long distance away, like the other side of the world, will have bounced multiple times. They'll be pretty weak because they've had to bounce off both the surface of the earth and the ionosphere. They've sort of formed two surfaces about, across which signals can bounce. And they will be arriving incident to where we are at very low on the horizon. So the goal for the longer-distance communication is to get a very low takeoff angle, and the way to do that is to raise the antenna up higher off the ground. An extra bonus of having a higher structure like this is that it minimizes RF fields at ground level, allowing compliance with FCC RFI exposure limits. And an additional request for having two structures, I mentioned I have one at my current residence, is for sort of flexibility, I'd like to be able to conduct what's called "single-operator-two-radio," meaning one person with two radios, with the ability to transmit on one and receive on another. And having antennas, having antennas separated in physical space means that your transmitting antenna isn't blowing out your receiver because the, because the signal is coupling from one antenna to another because they're too close together. It also allows for independent rotation. By the way, both of the proposed arrays of antennas on top of these structures would be rotatable. And so being able to rotate one or both of the arrays in different directions means you could, for instance, listen to a station in Europe, and then immediately, without having to wait for the antenna array to swing, switch to the other antenna on a different structure and listen to a station in South America. It does take a while for antennas on rotators to turn, and that can be a little bit frustrating if you're trying to quickly switch to somebody in a different location.
I have a question, Zach.
Sure.
Not yet.
Okay. I'm excited to answer questions, I'm sure you have them, so I'll be happy to do that. I have another slide, I can't recall. One additional point I wanted to make about safety, we do take that very seriously in amateur radio. It's the subject of a number of questions that we get on the tests to earn our licenses. So in particular, as I've been considering constructing this station, I thought about what the requirements of the National Electric Code and have reviewed the requirements for grounding and bonding, both for complying with that and for my own safety, to make sure that the structures are themselves sufficiently grounded, the feed lines coming off of the structures are also grounded, and that the, the radio structures are themselves tied into the service ground of the, that residents at the property. There are a lot of considerations that go into making sure one of these structures is electrically safe. I mentioned the FCC's RFI exposure guidelines, and our materials provide calculations for those, showing that these structures, as I intend to use them even at the maximum power level my license authorizes me to use, fall well within the FCC's guidelines for RFI exposure. I also considered the Federal Aviation Administration's requirements for structures as potential barriers to navigation by pilots, and the calculations I did showed that these structures are well under any requirements for reporting to the FAA. There is no requirement also that any lighting be added to these towers for air navigation, they would be dark at night. Those are the, I think, the four slides that I have. I'll be happy to answer questions when it's time to do that.
So Louis, you're going to tell us about your photo simulations.
Can I swear you in first as well? Can I swear you in first as well? All right. Oh, and is there a microphone over there for you? Or even the one? If that doesn't stretch the one behind you.
I'll just hold it.
Or the tall mic? And so, do you swear affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
So we were contracted to develop plans and photo simulations for Zach's proposed Was this submitted as part of their documentation, this photo? Okay. This illustration is a visibility analysis done.
Actually, that slide wasn't. But the remaining ones were, I think.
Sorry. So I will add this.
This is Jim Snid joining the conference.
Thanks, Jim.
Yes, we're, yeah, we're in process right now. Are you good to listen in?
Yes.
All right. Well, welcome, Jim.
So this image was produced using data available on the Vermont CGI Center for Graphic, Geographic Information, thank you, using a terrain surface model with the structures included on it. So it is a surface model, it is LiDAR data that was collected in 2017. It illustrates top of trees, tops of buildings, ground elevation. That was modeled in the, in a ArcGIS platform. The, a tower location, for simplicity, I just selected one tower at the center point of the, of both. It's, should be very similar if I had done it for both. The blue areas are areas where the, above 50 feet on the tower will be visible, and then these green areas are areas where the top portion of the tower, the 70-foot height and the antennas would be visible. Where you, there is a lot of tree cover around the proposed tower site, which really limits the visibility on surrounding properties.
Well, while this is being sorted out, just, Jim, for your benefit, we're just, we're at the point, we're going through the, the application is being presented.
This is a zoomed-in.
What page are we going?
Yeah, these, these slides that they're going through are not currently in the information that we have. They would be, yeah, they would be brought into evidence.
This is a zoomed-in photo of the previous slide I had. Many of the houses on Sutton Farm Road will be blocked by the tree line, the hedgerow that parallels Sutton Farm Road. And then this is, I should have shown the property line on here, which I inadvertently didn't. But his property pretty much extends this way. And so, that is the projected visibility based on the surface model. We also produce photo simulations of the proposed tower from the property itself. This is worst-case scenario.
This is Exhibit 9 to our application.
Did you get that, Jim?
Yes, I received an email with several photos.
Right, this, what's on the screen now is Exhibit 9 from the, from the applications
To produce these simulations, we actually flew a drone at the proposed tower locations. I drove around to locate that drone from, on the town roads. It was very difficult to spot in many locations, between the tree covers, the size of our drone, and the weather conditions weren't absolutely perfect, but the, from the bulk of the locations where I looked, it was very hard to spot. And I have done lots and lots of photo simulations for communication towers over the last 15 years. This was a very challenging one, just based on the roadside vegetation, the trees that run along Barso Road. just continue on. This is from Zach's driveway entering into his house. The proposed tower will be visible. As you drive down the road, the trees in the foreground do provide significant screening. It's very hard to see the tower.
Is it shown? Is the drone shown on this photo?
The drone is not shown on this photo.
This is a simulation.
This is a simulation of the proposed tower. The tower was modeled in, in AutoCAD, three-dimensional tower model was built, it was, the drone was used as a guide to cite the tower location, plus three-dimensional modeling of the terrain was included.
You only show one?
We actually show both. As you zoom in, this is the tower to the north, and then the tower to the south is And then as I zoom in on these photos, it's like you're wearing binoculars, or you have binoculars, so as I zoom in, that does not mean that the tower is going to be much more visible as a simulation. Caused some confusion in the past, where people thought it was going to be much more visible than it was. This is from the south corner of the property, southwest corner of the property. Located right around here. I had attempted to take it from Sutton Farm Road, but it was hard to spot in several locations with the intervening tree cover. And for a worst-case scenario, we took it from the property location. Again, these are the two proposed towers. They are lattice tower design. The face of each of the triangular frame is about a foot wide. And then the, the antennas at the top are like old TV antennas that used to dot three quarters of the houses across, across Vermont back before cable was more prevalent. And then this third location is from the west corner of the property. This is his existing garage barn building. The house is located behind these trees, back to, located at this corner of the property. So those were the photo simulations that we had produced.
And just to be clear, Louis, all three of those were taken from Zach's property?
Yes, all three were taken on his property.
So I think we're done with our initial presentation, and please feel free to proceed.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. So now I'd like to invite questions from the board. Steven, I think you had one.
I had a couple, yeah. You had mentioned, Zach, that you'd like to have one tower to transmit, one tower to receive. You can't be receiving and transmitting at the same time, like physically, right? So don't you transmit something and then wait for a response? And then, or are you transmitting for long periods of time and at the same time listening with your, with your other ear? How does that work?
Good question. Thank you. Yeah, if you had just a single radio, a single radio, we usually call it a transceiver. It is a combination transmitter and receiver. And when the single radio is transmitting, acting as a transmitter, circuitry turns off the receiver because the transmitter would overload and damage the receive circuits if it were receiving the strong signal that it was transmitting at the same time. However, if you have two radios, you can use one as, or two transceivers, you can use one as a transmitter hooked up to one antenna, and use the other as a receiver, and simultaneously do both at the same time with headphones plugged into both of them, piping audio from one, one receiver. piping audio from one, one receiver into one ear and the audio from the other receiver into the other ear. When the transmitter stops transmitting, you're hearing both receivers, one in each ear. And when you, the transmitter is going, you hear just one receiver. But it is important to keep the antennas separated sufficiently because it will, even if antennas are very close together, even on different frequency bands, the power from one will bleed into the other and will cause your reception to go down or potentially damage your receiver circuitry.
Okay, can I keep on going?
Sure.
All right. You also had mentioned that the two towers, I mean, my question is why two towers? And you've explained why, but I have further questions.
Sure.
So that you have these, these horizontals picking up signals and they are oriented in different directions. You only have two stacks. Isn't it possible to, to put more of these things on a single tower that are facing all in the different directions to, to get the, the different directional signals that you're, that you're looking for?
Another good question. I mean, there are innumerable ways to set up your antenna systems. And yeah, the, the proposed system here is two stacks that are rotatable. It is possible to attach rotation rings lower on a structure like this and have rotatable antennas lower down. That's technically possible. I assume that's going to be expensive, but it's, I guess it's technically possible. The reason I'm, I'm not planning or asking for that in, in this application is again, because I want the antennas to be up high to gain the benefit of having that low takeoff angle and also for the seven megahertz antenna to be up high enough, a half wavelength up in height, so it will function properly. I should have mentioned another, you know, reason for having two structures is just flexibility. I could also take advantage of by having antennas in two different physical locations, a receiving technique called diversity receive, where you receive, you use two different antennas to receive at the same time and electronic circuitry picks a signal that's strongest incident on the antenna and pipes that into your, your phones. Because of constructive and destructive wave interference, an incident signal in one location could be very strong, whereas in a different location, it might be very weak. So diversity receive gives the ability to electronically pick the signal that's strongest. That's another example of the flexibility of having two structures.
You good?
I'm good for now.
All right.
I have a couple of questions, Zach.
Sure.
I'm not an expert, far from it. Just, just to kind of frame the discussion, how many ham radio operators are there in the U.S.?
That's a fantastic question. I don't know the answer to that question.
Is it a million? Is it 10,000? Just out of curiosity.
I would estimate it's more than 10,000. Maybe Brian's looking at me now. He's going to try to Google it. I don't have the answer.
No, my, 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 or, and then the world, right? Because your reach is globally. So my, so do, what does someone do when they're a ham radio operator in New York City? Or they don't have, you know, the benefit of having a large lot like you do, you know, put up top. What do other people do? Because you also mentioned something that made me very curious, that you can take it to the beach or the mountain. So what do you do then?
Yeah, there are lots of different kinds of amateur radio stations. This one, we would probably call this a base station. This is, you know, a station that you can construct in a larger lot. And base stations run the gamut, in my experience. I've seen people attempt to build TV antennas like this for the 80 or 160-meter wavelength band, and those would need to be up hundreds of feet in the air. Or build what they call the antenna farms of five or 10 towers. That's sort of on the larger side of things. On the smaller side of things, you can construct or build very tiny little radio sets operating on the same frequencies that I'm in this proposal, but going, but transmitting into much smaller antennas. I have one, a magnetic loop antenna that operates, that is the size of, I don't know, three feet in diameter. It's just a loop of wire. It is also an antenna. Antennas comes in all shapes and sizes. It is a very inefficient antenna, especially at low frequencies. And so, you know, in my example of, of operating from the Red Cross Shelter in Maine, that would definitely not be a base station. That would have a reasonably weak signal. And usually the weaker station with a small antenna or less power relies on bigger stations with better antennas and more power to receive them. And so there's just a wide range of different kinds of stations.
Okay, and so that leads to another question that you mentioned, the, with regards to... If you have two antennas, you can do more things than with one.
Yeah.
From your, so what is the limit? I mean, can you put four antennas? You eight? I mean, I'm just curious to see where, you know, where the, where the, does ham radio have any, or the, the rules, I guess, have any limits as to? How much power or how much reach can someone have?
There are definitely limits on power. The FCC limits us to 1.5 kilowatts in transmit power from our transmitters. So that is set by the FCC. My amplification systems will not exceed that level of transmit power. The FCC doesn't, doesn't specify any particular station design criteria. It does limit us to particular bands of frequencies. So, and when I got my license, the lowest frequency band available was the 160-meter wavelength, which is actually right near the AM broadcast band, if you're familiar with AM radio, if anybody still listens to that. We now have additional allocations in, on even lower frequencies down around in the hundreds of kilohertz range. Those, those frequencies are very large wavelength and for to have an efficient antenna would require a very large antenna. A quarter wave at 160 meters is a big structure. So, you know, I, the FCC does not say we can't build antennas for those frequency bands either. In practicality, there are FAA limits on if you want to go above 200 feet, you're going to start talking about what, you know, putting aircraft signaling on there. The expense goes up. So you don't see a lot of amateur radio stations on the truly monumental scale, although some people have done that. But so for those lower frequencies, typically a lot of amateurs will build compromised antennas out of wire and they just, and make do with the inefficiency. A lot of the, a lot of the antennas on those very low frequencies that typically require big antennas are so inefficient that when you put up 1,500 watts into them, your effective radiated power is something like five watts. They're just inefficient antennas. But of course, the goal for most of us is to have as much efficiency as we can get on as many frequency bands that we are allocated. And I feel that this application is something of a compromise. I, I expect I will want to be, use some of the lower frequency bands and will probably want to just put up some wire antennas for those frequencies.
And my last question. You mentioned before that, you know, this is an emergency response, and I've, I've heard that before also, tool. But every, every picture I've seen has a lot of electricity power attached. So how does that work when, I mean, is it, is this a separate system? Or is it just a scaled-down version?
It's a good point. I mean, all this electronics and the, you know, rotators on the antennas won't work if there's no power. So at our home, we've recently installed a solar array and also backup battery power. So we should be able to continue operating this even when the power is out. The solar array will recharge the batteries. I also, you know, you can conserve a lot of power by reducing transmit power. So if conditions make it possible, you could transmit with 100 watts instead of 1,500 watts. If you can still get your signal through, you can save, you can make the batteries last a long time.
So like in Maine, how did you transmit?
In Maine, the Red Cross Shelter, as I recall, had a, a generator. I think the National Guard might have brought a generator to the Red Cross Shelter. It was a school. And so that had commercial power available. But you also trained to be ready for, to, you know, handle adverse conditions as an emergency communicator. So bring lots of batteries in a solar pack.
Can I just ask a follow-up to one of those? You mentioned that you might put up wire antennas for lower frequencies. Would they, that be additional antennas on those structures? Or is that a separate thing that you're talking about?
That would be a separate thing. I'm not planning in this application to add any more antennas to these structures. I imagine using some trees to support some, some wire antennas. And again, they, those, that kind of construction would be less efficient than a, what we call a beam antenna, like these ones pictured here for those frequencies. But I'm willing to accept that compromise and use the system as it's, as I can construct it without a wire.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Got some questions too.
Go ahead.
I've had some questions. Well, one question is, I mean, there are antennas out there. And is there ever a possibility of co-locating on another antenna that exists out there that's, that's that high?
I guess I'm not sure I quite understand the question. So put these, put, these would be my antennas that I own, put them on somebody else's tower?
Right, yeah. Does that ever, I mean, it happens all the time with cellular and...
Yeah, that's true, in the commercial world. A lot of the, a lot of different services will pile onto a single tower. You can see that on like Mount Mansfield or Killington. They have a single support structure that supports bunches of different antennas for different radio services, like paging or emergency services.
And I think we have it in town here, right? On the water tower?
You might have multiple antennas on a single structure. So I mean, I mean, I don't know. In order to make my system work, I mean, I guess, I, these antennas are connected to my station by what's called a feed line or a transmission line. So it's really only practicable for me to connect them up to the, to a reasonable distance of transmission line. I'm not, I mean, uh, putting them on, you know, like a municipally-owned tower somewhere else. Yeah, I wouldn't have access to the structure. I hadn't considered, I don't know of many amateur radio operators that have even considered doing that. I know that some of our amateur radio VHF antennas are co-located on municipally-owned structures. We have, by the way, I should explain, these antennas are, I think Brian mentioned, for short wave or we call high frequency. We also have allocations on very high frequency and ultra-high frequency and, and frequencies above that. And so some of our VHF and UHF antennas, we set up systems called repeaters. I'm sure the town is familiar with that. You use repeaters so that somebody with a walkie-talkie can talk to their repeater, then their signal is rebroadcast to, to be heard further away. We do that, the same thing in the amateur radio service. And a lot of those antennas are co-located on existing towers or municipal towers or water towers. These antennas, could they, they're, they're larger than that. It would be, they, they, it would be hard to convince a municipality to let me put one on one of their towers. Usually, private owners of towers charge for tower space. There's only so many antennas that can be added to a tower for various technical reasons, both mechanical and also for electromagnetic interference with the existing services on the tower. So it would be expensive and also difficult for me to physically connect the antenna.
That was my question. If it's, if it's located on a different tower, how would you even be able to access it?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Oh, phone line or something?
Yeah, okay, that's a good, that's a good point. There's, um, there is, you can remotely control stations. And that's a technology that amateur radio operators have been working on specifically in the past few decades as computer technology has improved and communications technologies has improved. So it is possible to remotely control a station. You know, it's not my preference. It's, it's if, for instance, for the emergency communications aspect of things, if the regular telecom lines are down, that cuts off your access to your remotely controlled station. It also means that you, you just, the remote control is, in my view, pretty neat, but you just don't have the same level of control of your station as you do with, when it's physically where you are. If anything goes wrong, anywhere in between that signal chain, you have to, you know, go to the remote location and try to fix it. And again, you get into the issues of access to that location. It's, it's nowhere near as ideal as having a station at your physical location.
You mentioned Mount Mansfield and I've been up around those antennas and big signs, danger, electromagnetic radiation, all that stuff.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the danger to your surrounding neighbors and to yourself? But you've, I assume that you've accepted that part, if there is any, but the, your surrounding neighbors for 1.5 KW?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we might have all saw the, the news about the antenna on Mount Mansfield that caught fire and they're trying to figure out why that happened. Probably, I don't know, I suspect maybe heating elements they had up there to keep ice off of their antennas. Any case, yeah, the FCC has specific rules and regulations regarding RF safety for the safety of both amateur radio operators and the general public that might be near any antennas that we're using. My application has those calculations. I've done them and calculated that at all locations outside of our property lines, the EMI or the RF signals are well below the limits that the FCC has set. I should note that these antennas are for frequencies, that it's, it's all non-ionizing radiation. This is not, you know, this so-called hard radiation that you might think of as dangerous from something like a nuclear power plant or something like that. This is non-ionizing. The main effect of non-ionizing radiation on people is heat. Of course, heat can be damaging to human tissue. But again, this is, these antennas are located high up to reduce the, there's something called the inverse square law, which means that the intensity of the field is reduced with the square of the distance from the radiator. So having these up high in the air means that the signals by people that were likely to be anywhere near them are, are going to be quite low. Again, the frequency is very low compared to some of the microwaves that could potentially be more damaging to human tissue. These frequencies are typically wavelengths much greater than that of a human body. So the health physicists, and I don't claim to be one, but they say that these lower frequencies are less likely to be harmful to people than a frequency that's sort of closer to the wavelength of a human body or a human eyeball, for instance.
Well, you're trying to send a signal like 1,000 miles or something. And so that inverse square law, that's like way out there.
It is.
And so where...
Yes, Jim? Maybe just your question to the chair?
Do you want me to weigh in on any of these questions or just stand by if anybody has a question and then provide an answer at that time?
I'm going to defer to the chair, Jason.
Yeah, I think if, I mean, if you have a comment that you want to weigh in, that would be appropriate. Did you have something to add now?
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, a couple of these, I'll be just making some notes on. The question just arose as far as co-location. That came about as a, a way to resolve a proliferation of towers for wireless and cellular industry, where all of the carriers covering the market want to cover a similar area. And their RF engineers have similar areas they need to cover, the distance of which, by its very definition, is just a small cell, which are only a few miles in diameter. So the co-location concept works for cellular and wireless communications, but would be, I would think, completely impractical for amateur radio in that you would not have, you know, access to the towers. No cellular tower owner would allow ham radio antennas of this size and type to be put on their tower because it would just not be compatible with the, the use for wireless and cellular.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. Then there was another question about locating multiple antennas on a single tower and of the, the type that have been specified here in the proposed installation. That's also a function of the capability, wind loading of the tower, of the mast, of the rotator, and also the spacing between... the rotator, and also the spacing between the antennas before they start interfering with each other. So of the types of antennas that the applicant has specified here, a single tower, Ron 45 Tower with that size mast and rotor would not support all of those beam antennas on a single structure.
And my apologies, Jim. I should swear you in before that. I know your resume speaks ahead of you, but do you swear and affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent, thanks. Did that, where were you going?
I think that answered the question. You checked out the RF for the neighbors and it's within FCC.
I did.
Oh, yes, the RF, the RF energy, the, one of the things that I put in my initial report that I sent to Dean was that this station operating at power levels and frequencies meet all of the FCC OST, Office of Science and Technology requirements for human exposure to RF radiation. It's much, much lower than the maximum. So that is not a concern, a health concern.
If I may, I think there was an additional question about the weakness of if the signals or the power levels are, the signals are coming from so far away, aren't the inverse square law mean that they're going to be extremely weak when they're received? And the answer is yes, they are extremely weak when they're received. It's part of the challenge of this service and this hobby is that especially signals from a long distance away will be very heavily attenuated, especially if they've bounced multiple times and they've traveled a long distance. So we make up for that by having very sensitive receivers that are capable of detecting signals that are extremely weak. And that's part of the challenge. And sometimes the signals are so weak that they are not detectable. That's part of the challenge of this activity. And, you know, building better antennas allow you to receive weaker signals.
I actually meant it the other direction because the same signals that you're receiving from Russia or wherever, you know, we're receiving them too in our bodies. So it's the ones that you're sending out. They're most potent. Because they've got to go that 1,000 miles or 2,000 or 3,000 or whatever.
Yeah, when you're closer certainly to any transmitting device, you're going to be receiving more radiation than when you're further away. And so that's, you know, and that's why the FCC has done, run these calculations and set these limits that do depend on distance. And so that's why that's, you know, that distance calculation is included in the FCC regulations. And that's something that I considered as I was calculating that, the exposure.
Yes, we encounter a lot of this in the broadcast industry where the transmission power is in the sometimes millions of watts, which have come, becomes a big deal for someone climbing on the tower. And there are measures that have to be taken to reduce the power or turn off the transmitter when tower crews are working on the tower in proximity antenna. Those types of power levels and fields are not even remotely close to what we find in amateur radio stations. They're much lower.
I have, thanks for that. I have another question unless somebody has.
I'm just waiting for you to do that.
Okay, John mentioned that, what is the limit as far as number of towers or as far as number, amount of height? One of the very first slides that you had up there said that as an amateur radio operator, you're allowed to do whatever you want. So, well, that's what the slide seemed to say. And so I'm wondering, first of all,
If you're asking for a legal opinion, I'd be happy to give it, but if you want to ask a factual question, Zach should answer that.
Well, just as far as, I think we all appreciate all of the work that you've done in modeling these and putting the presentation together. But this is maybe for Jason or Dean, why are we reviewing this at all, I guess? And why are we asking these questions? If you can do it, you know, if you can just do whatever you want.
Yeah, we are serving as receiving evidence and then we go off and deliberate based on what we understand of this in light of the ordinance. So this isn't like a normal planning commission meeting where we debate stuff and try and figure it out. Like that all happens when we go into a deliberative session. So the questions that we need to be asking are more factual or about information that's in the, in the application that we've received or things around that.
Okay, so specifically to the slide early on in the presentation, you said that the federal regulations say that local municipalities do not have a say in restricting antenna placement or construction or height or capacity. And so if we're going to deliberate, I want to be clear, like what are the federal regulations saying?
I didn't mean to give that impression and if I did, I apologize. What I was saying is that, wait for the slide to come up. Why don't we go to the one that says principles from leading cases? Yeah. That fix
There was one previous to that. It was like the first or second.
That's just, so that's the federal regulation at 47 CFR, section 9715.
Yeah, this is the one I'm referring to.
That's just, that's
Local regulation of a station must not preclude antenna services communications.
Right.
But it doesn't say reasonably
Yeah.
It does not say accommodate anything.
And it doesn't say, and it doesn't say no regulation. It says the minimum practical regulation. And this is, that's just a direct quote from the FCC regulation. That's not any interpretation of me or anyone else.
So what does reasonable and
Again, this is part of what we need to deliberate. And that's based on all the information that's included in our ordinance, yeah.
Let me just do something that law professors do and which I hated when I was a law student, but let's assume a really ridiculous set of facts and see if that can help clarify the point. Suppose Zach said, I want to put up 5,000, 5,000 foot towers. And you'd say, and he'd say, well, you know, I want to do that. I think that's what I need to accomplish my purpose. I think it would be fair to say that you would not be unreasonable if you declined to accommodate that. Now, the thing about the FCC's regulation is that they deliberately did not set a specific height. They talk about it. They were asked, you know, can you make a blanket pronouncement? Anything under such and such a height is fine. Anything over such and such a height is not fine. They declined to do it. They wanted to leave it to a case-by-case analysis.
Just one question kind of related to that. You mentioned
In answering my question, that you had, the FCC limited you to 1.5 kilowatts, correct?
That's correct.
So just to put it into perspective, what, how much output is this going to have? This setup? And maybe it's in the application, but it's quicker to ask you.
So I'm trying to
Well, you said the limit is 1.5.
Yeah, yeah.
So what is this?
So
Is this half a kilowatt?
Right, so good question. I appreciate, thanks for that. I intend to, I don't yet own a 1.5 kilowatt amplifier. I own a 500 watt amplifier.
Okay.
Amplifiers are expensive. I intend to one day own a 1.5 kilowatt amplifier, but I do not yet. That said, there's another sort of piece to your question, which is that these antennas have what's called gain. They shape the direction of the received and transmitted signal. And so I thought you, where I thought you were going was saying, well, what is the effective radiated power of these antennas? Because you have to calculate, you have the 1.5 kilowatts coming out of your amplifier, then you have some losses in the feed line. So you have less than 1.5 kilowatts when the power gets to the antenna. And then you have to calculate what is the effective radiated power? You calculate the gain of the antenna in its particular direction. So if you're, if you're, if you imagine like a T of a satellite dish, if you're staring right at it, you put five watts into it, you might have effective radiated power, quite a lot of wattage coming at you and almost zero watts behind the dish. So I've done those calculations in the RF safety analysis, assuming that I owned a 1.5 kilowatt transmitter and assuming like all the worst cases of, you've got the antenna pointed right at you and you're standing as close as you can get on your property line. I've sort of figured out this is within the FCC's requirements for RF exposure. But the simplistic answer is that, yeah, I will, I intend to own a 1.5 kilowatt RF amplifier.
Which is what is allowed.
That's the maximum that's allowed by the FCC, yeah.
So my other question related to that, to this topic, obviously, so the height of the tower, is that a function of distance you're trying to reach? Because in your application, you mentioned Japan, I believe, Russia
Right.
And Hawaii, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah.
Which are pretty far from Vermont, but it's not Cleveland or, you know,
Sure.
Louisville or
Yeah, yes, that's, that is, that is the idea, is that as the antenna is moved higher off of the ground, the incident radiation comes closer to the horizon. And so, you know, you could, I have a series of charts that show as the antenna goes up, where it's put, where the signal is beaming kind of comes down and points towards the horizon. So, yeah, the idea is to be able to reach those most distant locations with this setup. Going up to 120 feet or 200 feet would push that radiation angle even further down towards the horizon, but it gets very expensive and is difficult to build towers that big and you have to worry about the FAA and stuff like that. So this height, I thought, was a reasonable compromise for me. It got the seven megahertz antenna up the one-half wavelength for that frequency band. So that antenna would function. It also put the 14 megahertz antenna up at one wavelength high, which does point that radiation lobe closer to the horizon, allows you to talk to further, more distant stations.
You might have just answered my question. Your narrative spoke frequently about a compromise and you've mentioned that tonight. We saw on one slide that it was 75 to 90%, you know, and 60%. I was just wondering if you could maybe expand any more on what you see as the compromise? I mean, you just explained two points. Are there others?
Well, I reached out to Mark Pride, who is the individual I mentioned in the application, who's more experienced than I am. I've never owned structures like this in my career. I recently just passed 25 years of doing this hobby and this was, would be the biggest proposed station I have ever planned or constructed. I reached out to Mark. He's had experience building structures like this and he initially suggested that I construct two 90-foot towers with 14-foot mast on top of them. And that seemed like more expense and trouble than I wanted to go to. So, you know, I asked him, well, what could I, you know, what would you recommend as an alternative to that? And he said, well, get the, get the seven megahertz antenna at a one-half wavelength and get your 14 megahertz antenna as high as you can. That was some of what went into sort of the compromise, I thought, that he offered with respect to the propagation studies. They talk about this 60% reliability. I've used the vocab software some myself, not in the level of detail that's been produced in the materials you have in front of you. But I think that reliability figure, as I understand it, is for broadcasters. And if you're a broadcaster, you want your, your audience to be able to receive your signal 100% of the time. You would not tolerate too much variation. Now, for shortwave broadcasters, they have to tolerate some variation because of the mechanics of ionospheric propagation. Some days, some nights are better than others. Sometimes in the 11-year sunspot cycle are better than others. Some signals do not propagate during the daytime on certain frequencies. For instance, seven megahertz is typically considered a nighttime band because of effects in the ionosphere. The skip just doesn't work for a long, for short distances, for long distances during the daytime. So there's like a lot of factors. It's sort of almost as much an art as it is a science. Yes, you'd like your, your RF factor to be 100%, 100% of the time. That's just not feasible in the shortwave world. So you build the best system that you can under the conditions that you have. And that's sort of what I've been doing in my 25-year career as a radio amateur. I mean, I started off with a little piece of wire in a tree 10 feet off the ground and now I have a 30-foot tower and I've sort of reached the limit of what I've been able to accomplish with that and wanted to advance the next stage in my progression as a radio amateur. And one
I could speak to that also if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. There are about 20 different amateur radio bands and each one has different propagation characteristics. In the HF band, there is no one frequency that works all the time. Different times of the year, different times of the day. The range that you can transmit and receive from varies, which is why amateur radios use multiple bands to communicate. At one point in the year, one time of the day, a certain band will work to a certain area and won't in another, whereas a day later at a different time of day, an alternate band will work. So that's why having multiple bands, multiple antennas and so forth are really necessary to be able to overcome that. I did some work with the Voice of America Relay Station in Bethany, which is near my home and office in Cincinnati. In their heyday, they had to be able to reliably transmit the VOA signals overseas 24/7/365. And to do that, their antenna farm encompassed one square mile, about 640 acres, and had two dozen antennas, some of them with towers that were several hundred feet high. So obviously, an amateur radio operation can't aspire to that type of reliability. But it's an example of the reason why you need multiple antennas at multiple heights because of the varying propagation conditions. And I could also speak just a bit to the federal preemption regulations and so forth as I've been involved in an awful lot of zoning hearings and so forth. And what the FCC preemption statutes want to convey is trying to
Sorry, this is Jason. I just want to interrupt there a little bit because we've, we have gotten into that a little bit in the beginning and that is something we can address. Noting the time, I want to make sure that we get some of these questions out so that we can keep things on track. Not intentionally to cut you off, definitely welcome your thoughts.
Well, I was just going to be a quick comment that the intent there is to prevent any type of abuse. And the reason that they don't specify specific things and use the term reasonable, which of course becomes a subjective matter in some cases, because they don't want to identify a specific height and so forth. But what generally prevails in these instances are what they consider legitimate things to regulate involve public health and safety, such as locating a tower five feet away from a daycare center that could fall on the kids. Rather than, you know, have a sufficient fall zone if the tower did collapse, that it would fall only on the property of the tower owner. Those types of things prevail, whereas other items that don't deal with public health and safety, such as aesthetics, are generally more easily challenged.
Appreciate that, thanks.
So two questions about the 60% figure. It's from the comments that were just made. The 60% is your, what you get from all the different antennas combined, not just one? Like six days out of 10 is what you get out of the combined power of everything you're putting up? Or are you talking about just one? One frequency?
That's a good question. And my understanding is that the way these calculations were run were one for a couple of different frequency bands, two of the many that were authorized to use the 14 megahertz and seven megahertz bands. And so that's the reliability figure for those single bands. Now, if you have access to all of the different bands, then you could say that, well, yeah, I have, I could reliably talk to the United Kingdom more than 60% of the time because I could switch to a band that is working. But again, it's somewhat variable. There can be blackout times when we have a solar storm and no bands will work at all. You just can't talk to someone. So it really depends. But having more But having more of good antennas on multiple different bands increases your ability to select the right frequency that's going to get your signal to the place you want to get it to, you know, and overcome all the challenges of sunspot cycles and ionospheric propagation and, you know, potentially weak signal at the other side of, or a weak station at the other side of the circuit path. So it's sort of, it's helpful to be flexible.
The second question is, from your studies, it sounds like this number came from looking at December in particular. Can you explain, this goes off some of Dean's questions, I think, but why December? And how does that compare to the rest of the year? Is that in Vermont? Is it a good month, a bad month?
Yeah, that's a good question, too. December is a dark month in Vermont. We don't have as much sunlight. So typically, the frequency range, the frequency bands that will be available for a greater percent of the day will be the lower frequencies, the ones that work long distance at nighttime. So if you look at these kinds of calculations for December, you'll see, you know, if you're, the percentage of the day that seven megahertz will work will be shorter than they would be in the middle of the summer when the sun is up more. It does, it changes the, the location of certain levels of the ionosphere that signals can bounce off of when the sun is up. So yes, these charts would change for, these calculations would change for different times of year. They would also change for different times in the sun's 11-year sunspot cycle. You know, I guess they're just, there isn't enough time to run simulations for every possible frequency at every possible, you know, location at all possible months and times of year. As one brief example, one propagation mode that we're familiar with is grayline propagation when both the transmitting and receiving stations are on the terminus between sunrise and sunset. And at those particular times of day, you can sometimes talk quite a long distance away that when you wouldn't otherwise. We typically use that to try to talk to Japan from here on the East Coast. So I guess the answer is, these are, these calculations and this modeling is, you know, it's not all encompassing. It doesn't include all the possible times of year and day.
Well, I guess just from, from your experience working as a ham radio operator, is December a good month or is June your best month and December your worst? Just sort of, not statistically necessarily, but is there a difference, a discernible difference?
Huh, that's a great question. I wish I had all the data of all the people I've talked to to figure out, when have I been most successful?
And that's okay if you don't.
I'm not sure I have a quantitative answer for you. I would say right now where we are in the 11-year sunspot cycle, the higher frequency bands are not doing very well. There are not much, many sunspots. Those are areas in the sun that are typically associated with good reflection in the ionosphere for the higher frequencies in the shortwave bands. So 14 megahertz and up, up to somewhere around 30 megahertz have not been doing well for the past couple of years. It's very difficult to talk to anybody on some of those higher frequencies right now. So right now, yes, I think I'm having a lot more luck on the lower frequencies, seven megahertz and below. And December is a good time to be using those frequencies because it's darker.
Thank you.
Did, yeah. All right, just one unrelated to that specifically. But back in the beginning, you had like four goals or objectives, you know? And one of them was experimentation.
Yeah.
And I wish you could expand on that and maybe make layperson Steve here understand what that means.
Sure. So I mean, I don't hold myself out to be any kind of great experimenter. I think there are some other amateur radio operators mentioned in our applications that are, including a Nobel laureate who's done some really fantastic work with digital signal processing and extremely weak signal work. Another from Ham who is involved in a Vermont business who is experimenting with an FCC license on really low frequencies. There's all kinds of opportunities for experimentation in this hobby, in this service. Things that I've been involved in, I've been experimenting with different antenna design and construction techniques. I've been involved in this, I think you saw, you saw a picture of VHF set up on top of Gore Mountain in New York State. I was involved in trying to construct a digital compass using an Arduino computer to try and make sure that the VHF antennas were accurately pointed. I've also been experimenting, using some digital techniques with propagation evaluation. 50 years ago, we had an idea of what these different frequency bands did based just sort of anecdotally. Yeah, it's December. I was able to talk to somebody, you know, in the UK or somebody in Japan. And now we are able to use computers a lot more to transmit very low-power signals and use very sophisticated digital signaling techniques to sort of, to build sort of a quantitative idea of what is actually happening to these signals once they get up into the ionosphere. So I've been involved a little bit in that as well. And I imagine there's more things to be discovered, as is true in most scientific pursuits. So I'm looking forward to seeing what else I can learn.
Thanks.
Yeah, I had a question about the 14-foot mast on the antenna. And I was wondering, it's my understanding that some of these antennas are, you can get collapsible versions, or at least some portion of them can, can...
Telescoping.
Yeah.
Aker umbrella?
Yeah. And I was wondering if that was something that you had considered.
I have not considered using telescoping antenna elements or sort of a collapsible array. I'm sort of trying to select antennas that are going to be robust and survive ice load. That is one consideration. You don't want to have to go up there too often to try and make repairs. I'm trying to go for things that are, has as few parts and moving parts as possible. So I haven't really considered doing that. And if you had collapsible elements, you'd use some kind of servos to move them and that's more potential things to break high up in the air. So I haven't considered that. There are some antenna designs that have sort of tubes. And inside the tubes are servos that move metal, the metal elements of the antenna. And the idea being that you can actually change the length of the antenna element inside the tube and have your antenna tune itself for the particular frequency you're interested in. A neat idea technically, but again, it means more moving parts and things that could go wrong up in the air. So I've been trying to avoid, or I've been trying to select things that are very simple and mechanically robust to survive wind and ice and stuff like that here in Vermont.
I have another question for you. You said you have a 30-foot tower right now on your property. What is going to happen to that tower when you move?
That's a good question. I haven't quite figured out what I'm going to do with it. It is side bracketed to my home in Charlotte right now. And I've not, I don't have any immediate plans to use it. These two structures would replace the functions that that 30-foot structure is serving and do a better job. So I imagine I could sell the old structure to somebody else who's sort of getting started in the hobby.
And I guess the follow-up would be, if you do decide to move, obviously you're making a pretty large investment by putting these in. But if you sell this property, is there any guarantee that you will take them down? Or what will happen to them?
Oh, if I sell the Shelburne property.
Yeah, if you sell the Shelburne property.
Yeah, we haven't yet moved into the Shelburne house. We just recently bought it.
Running the end of life of these towers.
Yes, yeah, good question. Definitely. The end of life would be that these structures would come down when I was no longer using them. So, and that would be, you know, sort of the reverse process of constructing them. They're supported with Gaia wires and it would involve climbing to the top of the tower, using a gin pole, we call a gin pole, and disconnecting them one section at a time and taking them down and taking the antennas off. But yeah, once I'm, I would not want to try to sell the property with those structures on it. I mean, maybe there'd be another amateur radio operator that would want to purchase it, but I don't know. But that'd be decades from now, I imagine. But no, I would, my intention is to, when I sell the property or when I'm no longer using them, to remove the structures.
Just maybe just clarify also, I believe there was something in the proposal, if you don't use them for a year, right?
Yeah, I'm willing to accept that. And my, my, my view is that as long as I'm at the property, I'm going to definitely use them, both of those structures, multiple times a year. That's been the case with my existing station. I have, you know, I keep a log of everybody I talk to and I try to be on the air, you know, weekly. Sometimes I have other pressing obligations and I'm not on that often. But yeah, as long as I'm, as I own my home and I tend to be using these structures.
For the application, you were open to if the town asks to have a bond for removal, remediation, that sort of thing, that end of life? I'm not understanding that, I think the terms would need to be worked out. It was, I can give you the language. No, it was, the ordinance requests a, for removal requirements, to have a bond in the amount equal of 150% of the estimated cost of removal. Yeah. And clearly details would be worked out. It said that you'd provide such a bond if it was deemed necessary. And I understand that there's a lot that could go into that because you could have another operator that's very interested in that property. Should you move and that kind of thing?
Well, if I could just chime in with my experience representing cell companies, that's typically used because there's a concern that the company's going to go out of business and the tower's going to be sitting there and no one's going to take it down. Since Zach's not running a business, he's not, it's not a commercial venture. He's not using the tower as what they call vertical real estate. You know, he's not trying to lease space to others to pay him for the use on the tower. I think the risk of him just kind of walking away from that tower is much lower than would, than it would be in the cellular company case. And again, it seems like the cellular company case was the paradigm for the ordinance.
Yeah, agreed. I'm looking at page 13 of the application, though. It just, the answer was that, to that requirement was that you would provide such a bond if the telecom communications review board deemed it necessary. And there may be some discussion that needs to happen. We need to deliberate on it. I just wanted to, since we were talking about it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's in the application. That's, yeah, something we can definitely talk about. I see it on page 13.
No, of the application itself, not the, I don't know what that is. The, sorry, the supplemental, the narrative accompanying. Yeah.
If I may?
Yeah, sure.
I would also add that there are, you know, I'm not the only amateur radio operator in Vermont and these structures have value. I hopefully will not be in the position for many years of having to worry about this, but other amateurs I have known that have passed away, other amateurs in the community are interested in going and helping them take down structures that were up and putting them back into use. So I think the community as a whole has an interest in making sure that they, these kinds of structures don't, you know, go to waste or lie unused.
And also in the interest of time, because we're clearly going to be continuing this hearing. But are there any other questions from board members? Okay.
I'll just say that there are three-quarters of a million ham radio operators.
Thank you for that. Okay.
From Pora, no less.
All right, Sean, how many in Vermont?
Well, there's two at this table. There's two at this table, at least.
So now I'd like to invite anybody else who may have information to present regarding the application. And this would be for the purpose of submission as evidence. There would be a time for just general questions, but this is for actual submission of evidence.
Would you want to consider sharing with Mike Busher?
Delay it, but he is here, so I didn't know.
That is true, just a...
A quick overview of the images that were distributed earlier today?
To go over those again? Oh, oh, of the pictures that you had...
To explain that packet.
Yes. Yeah, let's insert that first.
Sure.
Yes.
So you...
Yeah, would you like to use one of those? Yeah, is that going to be an easy thing to do?
It's already loaded on the laptop, so if that, if that window's closed, you can run through those.
All right. Do you want to set that up if you have the...
Definitely.
Yeah, I will. While that is being set up, mind of yep, there you go. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Probably where Dean is. And there is a mic there. And since we're definitely not going to get through this tonight, just as an expectation, are we okay with targeting wrapping up around 9:30-ish? Just, and then we'll make sure we continue and apologies if we don't get to the sections anybody might be waiting for.
So I'm Michael Busher. I'm a landscape architect, owner of TJ Boyle Associates. We are landscape architects and planners. We also do a fair share of visual impact analysis work for local, state, and federal agencies and developers. So for the project at hand, Dean gave me a call and let me know they had this case coming in and they were looking for a little bit of support to understand the visual potential aesthetic impacts of it. So we reviewed the information that was provided by the applicant and I went out and wanted to do a little field investigation, understand the visibility myself. So we made a site visit just the other day, to be honest, and drove around and just was starting to get an understanding of the area. I am from there, so I sort of know it. And just where things are going to be visible from. So this map just sort of indicates the tower locations as well as areas that we, I visited on the field work. And there's viewpoints, accompany photos that were taken to document the situations. So basically, what we're finding is that probably the heaviest areas of visibility are to the west and the south of the project. This is from Sutton Farm Drive. We quickly created a model in Arcseen GIS. Not really to do, it's a very coarse representation, but allows us to fly around very quickly and understand more or less the height of the towers. So just to give you a little understanding of what we're looking at here. This is, this is the aerial date, aerial imagery draped on top of, we have a proprietary 3D model for the entire state of Vermont. We use it for a variety of things, running view sheds, so we can understand what the obstruction does in terms of visibility. So this is draping aerial imagery on top of that, that model. This model actually can be refined out to be a little bit higher resolution. Right now, this is at a three-meter resolution just because what we have covers the entire state. So we don't want our machines to be totally bogged down. But what you can see here are the two towers. And going back to the image before, that grouping of trees, that grouping of trees, the house, the house, the evergreen trees, the evergreen trees. Lighter data is going to be a little bit misleading. Things are going to be actually a little bit higher because it penetrates into the canopy of the trees. And that's why some of the less dense trees, you're not going to see represented on this model just because the lidar is breaking through that. So from Sutton Farm Road, you can see that if you're looking at the house, for instance, house, it's going to be clearly visible from Sutton Farm Road, towards the end of it on the cul-de-sac end. This is a view from further up on Sutton Farm Road, so viewpoint two. When you come along that edge, there's a, it's not a very tall hedgerow, but there is a hedgerow of fairly dense shrubs and... a hedgerow of fairly dense shrubs and it's more immediate, so it's going to do a little bit more to screen the project. Out on Dorset Street, you can see the house here on the property. And from the next image, looking up at the, at the house from the driveway, here's the proposed heights of the towers. So they're going to match about the top of the tree height. So, you know, the trees are going to do quite a bit more work to help disguise them, but there's clearly gaps and holes, so there is going to be, you know, intermittent visibility as you're going up and down Dorset Street. Corner of Barstow Cheese Factory in Dorset. House is over here. This is that same group of trees that we could see in the previous photo, which are these trees. And your, your, one tower is actually hidden, the other tower is around, around that height. So you're, you're, you know, again. So this particular view, one of the, one of the towers is in the tree.
Yeah, sorry, when we did the simulations and had our drone flying there, from this particular view, the first tower is hidden behind the trees to the right and then the second tower is hidden behind the trees to the left. I mean, obviously if you move five feet, you might see it in one spot and not see it in another.
So again, you know, there's going to be intermittent visibility. That's what, that's what we're finding. There's going to be intermittent visibility moving down Dorset Street. Here we're on Barstow Road. There's, there is fairly good vegetation, but there are windows. So there are a few windows where you're going to have visibility through those windows. This is the view from the private resident directly west of the project. So you can see camel's humps off to the right a little bit. Here's the applicant's residence. Again, the residence, the tower is pretty much in line with the residence. Towers will be clearly skylined in these views and above the, above the tree canopy, above the background land form.
Michael, how is a typical telephone pole?
GMP's telephone, GMP's standard pole, I believe, is 35 feet AGL, above ground length. They, depends on exactly what they're doing with it, but typically between 35 and 45 is the rule of thumb. So this is a similar view. It's just on the driveway, leaving, leaving that same residential property to the, to the west of the applicant or project site. Laduke Farm Road, my guess, you know, a lot of times when we deal with these types of towers, we look at the snelling eye chart to try to understand what the limit of visibility is. Because of the thickness of the members of the tower, you can think of a screen. When you stand back from a screen, you don't really see the screen because the individual components, even though the screen's large, individual components are small enough that you're really seeing through it. In a spot like this, I wouldn't really expect the tower to be noticeable. Coming up on, onto the project site, again, you're going to have the towers about as high as that, that canopy level is. The one tower from this view, I think, would be right at the barn location. The other one would be off to the left a little bit of it. Again, coming down Dorset Street from the north, I think it's going to be pretty well screened by existing vegetation. So again, what we're really finding is the project's going to have the most visibility from locations, really to the south, to the west. There's going to be intermittent visibility down Dorset Street. So if this was a project we were approaching from 250 or 248, we'd be applying COECHI to this and we'd be looking at mitigation. This, you know, art of determination would be clearly that there would be an adverse effect from this project. The level, you know, the trigger to reach adversity is very low under, under COECHI. It's skylining. It's the character of the area where the project's being proposed, so that's pretty clear. So then we would move on to the next set of criteria. I haven't evaluated this project under COECHI. Things we would be looking at is like, can the towers be lowered? Can there be one tower? Thought about the idea of having one larger tower. Personally, I don't think that is as good as having lower towers. I think that having two lower towers is better than having a single taller tower. Expands the visual footprint of it. Mitigation, you know, try and understand where the best location on the property would be for the, for the towers would be one component of it. Really understanding what the visibility is. These are very, very, very rough rudimentary investigations to how the project would be visible. I understand that there was a view shed map prepared. So there's, this is an obstruction based one and that's a bearer. That's just zoomed in.
As evidence, would those just be added as an exhibit or is, maybe I need to clarify? In terms of those, those two documents that were shared earlier hadn't previously been shared? In terms of admitting those as evidence, is there anything other than just saying we'll admit those and then they become part of the packet?
There's nothing else you have to do other than give any objections prior to admitting.
Right, okay. And I think earlier I mentioned that those would be submitted to evidence. Are there any objections to that? Okay.
When looking at simulation, some of the advice that I would be giving is, is the way you observe a simulation is based on the focal length of the photograph, how large the photo is printed or projected at, and the distance at what you're looking at. The applicant provided photos at what is typically acceptable for what, non-compromised focal length, 50 millimeters. When it's printed at that focal length, you want to hold it about one and a half times the height of the projection or the print. So if you're standing way back from it, it's really misleading. Resolution's also very important, especially when we're dealing with something with, with very small members like this. So having high resolutions. So 4K projection or television or screens is about the type of resolution that you want to see things at, around a 4,000 horizontal resolution. That starts to replicate human visual acuity. So looking at the right perspective, you know, simulations really should be taken at, you know, locations. I think the simulations provided are very helpful for understanding the general character of the project. They're not provided from public locations, which is, which is a helpful item to have, to have the simulations provided from public locations. But, you know, we're still looking at this project, trying to understand what's, what the board would like us as an independent reviewer to do. And it sounds like the project is going to have a continued hearing, so anything that you would request, we're able to accommodate.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Could you address Mike's question about why you didn't have viewpoints from public rights of way?
As Mike pointed out, the intervening tree cover, or intervening tree lines did make very limited spotty views of the tower. When I did the simulation and the float and took the photos, we were in leaf on condition, which made it significantly more difficult to spot the proposed tower locations than is leaf off conditions. Dorset Street, Barstow Road, heavily trafficked areas, not a lot of areas to pull off on the side of the road and take photos. So in, to keep the worst case scenario is why we did the on property of the towers, basically without obstructions.
So Louis, you're saying that if you were to take photos from those public rights of way, the tower would be less visible than in the photos that you did take?
Correct. When the leaves are on. Well.
And there are trees in the way.
Right. I mean, even with the leaf off conditions, you still have the branches that obstruct views, so, I mean, yes, a leaf off condition is more, the tower is more visible. Thing is, with leaf off conditions, you're also at the shortest daytime hours, so you have a lot more night hours where you're not seeing the tower either. So.
Louis, could you comment on those slides that Mike prepared that are in that computer program? Particularly the red lines, the red vertical lines depicting the towers? Do you think those are representative of the tower's appearance?
So, no, and as Mike said, these are very preliminary to show where towers are potentially visible, where target, targeting the views, so you see the aspect, basically the, where, how the tower relates to the terrain. But you're looking at a red line on a blue screen where the tower is a lattice structure that's, you can see through. I don't know exactly what he was using for a pixel width on the red line and how that relates to the one foot base of the tower, but just in my experience, I would say that that is not truly indicative of what you'll see out there. I mean, it's.
And it's, it's not intended to be a photo simulation. This is, this is our, our method for understanding, you know, what the visibility, the height above existing obstructions are, you know? Us trying to better understand what the, what the visual impact, what the visual footprint, what the view shadow of the project is.
I mean, we do a similar, a similar modeling technique as we're producing the photo simulations where we create a solid line to indicate where the tower's going to go and then we model the three, we do a three dimensional model of the tower and place that over that line so that we match it up in elevation and we have it in real space. So this, this is just preliminary measure.
Am I allowed to ask a question? So I understand that you used a drone. Were you using the drone to assist in the simulation creation or were you placing the drone at the top of where you anticipate the tower is going to be so you can sort of do a 360 view around?
I mean, I had the drone in the air hovering as I drove around to spot, in place of a balloon float. It was windy the day that we needed to do these and so the balloons were to move too much, the drone actually hovers in place. We locked in on a GPS coordinate and it just hovered there as I drove around. And then we also recorded video while it was in the air in a 360 degree direction to see, basically if you were standing on top of the tower, what you would see, which can inversely direct you to what someone would see as they're looking at the tower. I think that's harder, that's, was the first time we'd ever done that. We didn't really understand exactly how to present that, so we did not enter that into evidence.
The towers aren't going to be red lines then, they're going to be what?
Like raw aluminum or something?
I believe it's galvanized steel.
Galvanized steel.
And I think with regards, with regard to pictures, this is stuff that we can discuss during deliberation and make requests for, for any clarifications if we need to, just to keep things moving.
Great.
Good? All right, yeah, thank you. And then now, I'd like to invite anybody who may have any, any additional evidence to present? Seeing none?
A question, is an opinion, can an opinion be considered evidence?
There's a, I may have to defer here. Is an opinion considered evidence?
I would like somebody from the public to present a comment, you're going to build an opportunity for that.
Right, yeah, and there, yeah, there is, and we actually might.
How about personal knowledge in those views? Would that be considered evidence?
In this case, my understanding is there would need to be something formal that's tangible that can be submitted, but questions can certainly, or statements can be made during that, the next open section, session, which is.
And can we ask questions of the evidence that they submitted? Is that in the comment?
In the, in the comment section, yeah. So in the next one. So this, I'm not seeing that there's anything formal tangible to be submitted that's been prepared. There is an opportunity to ask questions though, and make comments that will be on the record.
And we can get copies of what you all have. I mean, we're kind of at a disadvantage to be able to comment. We haven't seen anything tonight.
Well.
The materials except for the things that were added tonight are online, so we can send you the link and we will add to it. And Brian, please make sure that I get that and that digital copies as well, please. So you can get them as soon as I send you the link or if I can read it to you. So that, hopefully that disadvantage will be resolved.
Yeah, yeah. So does the, recognizing that we'll eventually go into a deliberative session, does the board have any questions, any additional questions based on what just happened? Okay. So now it would be if anybody has comments or statements that they'd like to make, we can have this mic go back there and when you come up, I'd like you just to introduce yourself, where you, where you live and I just need to swear you in.
I'm Dana Valentine. I live on Sutton Farm Drive.
All right. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, yes. I haven't seen what you've prepared. I guess just one immediate question is, the information about the radio frequency, is that for one tower or for two?
I'm sorry, the definition for the radio frequency?
You, apparently there's some evidence about how this, the radio frequency that this will emit. Is that what you provided, is it for one of the towers or for two towers, that total amount?
That's a good question.
Do you want him to respond directly or how do you want to handle that?
Well, in a perfect world, it would be receive all the questions and then we can address them. I would just to double check as far as, yeah. Well, if it's a question that can just be answered, then why don't we just do that? Yeah.
So this is. Yeah. So this is a question about the RFI calculations of exposure.
Yes, yes.
From this proposed project. The calculations I did were for, I believe as I ran the calculations, I ran it for the closest structure to the nearest property line, which I believe was the north structure.
Okay, so it's assuming the two towers then?
It didn't, yeah, I did, I did understand that there were two towers and I ran the calculations for the tower that was closest to the nearest property line. I wanted to be as conservative as possible, as, you know, make it as, consider the worst case scenario.
So did, did you include the effects of both towers at that spot?
Or does it matter if you're only transmitting one tower at a time?
Yeah.
Or can you transmit on two at one time?
Can I, hang on. Well, let's hold this. There was a question asked and an answer given and we can bring all of this into our deliberation.
So can you reset the question, please?
I will just make a brief summary that a question was asked about radiation and how, like, how that was calculated and if the tower closest to the property line in question was used to calculate the radiation and the radiation being emitted from both towers is the same, then that would be the most conservative worst case scenario.
It would be like double the amount of radio frequencies, radiation.
Yeah, you're wondering about, I, I guess it would be double if I were transmitting on two antennas at once. I have never, I haven't done that in my experience. I guess I maybe have when I was using a VHF frequency, maybe at the same time as an HF frequency, but for, I would, I don't envision using two 1.5 kilowatt amplifiers to transmit at the same time. I, I'm, I don't think there's a reason why I couldn't, but I, for a single operator like me, it's kind of confusing to try and, I sort of imagine like trying to talk and send Morse code at the same time on two different radios, and it would be too confusing for me, so.
How would that affect this?
Can I ask you to that?
Please.
Yes, Jen, please.
If you look at here at the power density calculations for each instance on each band, we're talking about very small percentages, 0.54%, 1.01%, 2.93%, and so forth, the highest being 13.59%. So you could be operating on every single band simultaneously, and you'd still be under the maximum.
Thank you.
I guess I just want to say a couple other things. One, I, we moved to our house, and our house is, I mean, I think we should show a photo. We were probably the most impacted because we're elevated, we're looking right out onto your house, and so this is obviously upsetting, because one of the things is we moved there for the view. And the other reason is, one thing that was very important to me was to not be anywhere near a power line. So to hear that I now have less control over that situation is upsetting to us, so I just wanted to point that out. I mean, I purposely didn't buy another house because it was close to a power line, and I understand we may not be, we might be safe with the FCC, but my opinion is, you can't, you know, I, I would like to control my exposure, so that's all I wanted to say.
My name is David Hedden. I live at 708 Barstow Road, and so I'm representing myself and my wife Rebecca Moore.
And do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
If you had that visual map, I could point out the little dot that I am, we are, our house, and you could, to see which one it is, of course, it's inundated in the blue here, so we're underwater by radio frequencies. So.
Is there a, is there a different map?
I could, I could still point it out.
So these, the orange dots. I, I'm about right.
No, you're, you're thinking.
You must be there.
No, he's on Barstow. He's on Barstow.
So that, no, that's me. He's the.
So what is obvious to me is that both of these towers, almost in their entirety, will be visible for us directly from our house. Because we're a little bit of top of a ridge, and then there's kind of a gully in between where the, where the property goes down, where the property line is, so we see right across the, the little gully and the pond and right over to the house. And with the towers on our side of the property, we probably see them from top to bottom. And it is clear that they would negatively affect our view and have a very detrimental effect on our visual look from our house. And there is the concern about the radio frequency exposure, and those two things would, in my opinion, significantly be detrimental to our property value if we were to consider reselling the house. So that is the evidence, my opinion, that I would like to offer to you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kevin Hocko. I live in the second orange dot on Sutton Farm Drive, 127, so.
And do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, yes. And my question is more, and I've read the CFR, and, and I've read some of the other statutes, and I've read the FAA mandates as well, but my, my curiosity is with the, the spectrum separations and the frequencies that you'll be broadcasting on, we're about a half mile from the VOR, the, the omnidirectional nav aid, and I believe there's a distance measuring feature with that nav aid as well for the Burlington Airport, and we are immediately underneath the final approach course for the VOR instrument approach into Burlington. So I'd just like to understand, in the application and the filing, the analysis that was done, has the FAA had the opportunity, or would they need the opportunity based on frequency spectrums to ensure that there's no interference with that navigation aid? Thank you.
Thank you. Care to answer?
That's a good question. Yeah, I'm aware of that Vortac facility in the area. It operates on different frequencies than the one I'm proposing to operate on. I, I don't expect they would experience or notice, that, that facility would notice any impact from transmissions from my proposed facility, because it is, it's, you know, many megahertz away, and it's sort of a completely different part of the radio spectrum, is my understanding of where that Vortac operates. I'm not aware of any FAA regulation about setbacks from facilities like that for image or radio services. I am aware of other kinds of regulations on transmitters for certain sensitive government installations, for instance, the National Radio Quiet Zone in West Virginia would clearly have objections to me trying to set up a transmitter inside their quiet zone, but I'm not aware of anything like that from the FAA for its navigational aids. It was a good question.
Is there a way to find out? That's something that we could.
Would you like me to do that?
Yes, please, Jen.
Yes, I'm, I'm a pilot also, by the way.
Obviously.
Well, the pilot would know that.
Yeah, we're very sensitive to that. So I can calculate the harmonic frequencies on each of these bands and see if any of them fall within that Vortac frequency range, and also contact the people at the FAA that maintain the Vortax and see what, what their concerns might be. I know that they monitor those frequencies and do tests on them quite regularly, but I'll see if I can get an answer to that question.
Yeah, thank you. And, and really, my question was, in the filings, has the FAA been notified?
And, and I think just as a courtesy, it, it's incumbent on us to ensure that they have the opportunity, and I think it's, it's actually suggested that the FAA be given the opportunity to assess safety of flight, so, thank you.
Thank you. And, and thank you, Jen. We'll, we'll be in touch. Did you have a, yeah. Please, yep. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maureen O'Brien, I'm at 718 Barstow Road, right across the field.
And do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My first question is actually regarding this map that's up there, because I thought I heard when it was presented that it was, the blue was visibility above 50 feet of the towers, and the green was visibility above 70 feet of the towers. And is that how it was presented, or did I misunderstand?
That is correct.
So visibility from 50 feet up to the 84 feet?
Yes.
Well, what about my view that's from ground zero up to the 84 feet?
I did not model that, but yes.
But, but you, you presented it like the view people were getting was only the top, you know, above 50 feet of the tower or above 70 feet, but a lot of that view of blue, I think, is from, I mean, for, I'm sure David Hedden and myself, it's from first, first foot to the, the whole 84 feet, clearly. I mean, I can.
There, I, when I modeled this, I modeled this for our internal use to produce the photo simulations and to understand the views in the vicinity of the tower. I knew from standing at the tower site that your house would see the entire view of.
Okay, so I want to make sure that's in the evidence, that it's really from the ground up and not from 50 feet and above. Okay? Second, I would just say that I also read in the application, there's a lot of references to court cases and this and that and information, and there was one reference to not, no impact on market values of houses. And I think the study was referencing Boulder, Colorado, study that was done about, I don't even remember the year, but it was probably at least 30 years ago. And I would suggest that the impact on housing is not minimal and is not nonexistent, that there's certainly impact on surrounding property values from the view, change in the view. I've been through development process in Shelburne, and I can tell you how Shelburne is very focused on views and view sheds and everything else, and the things that you need to go through to make sure that you don't impact, you know, the, the views that we have is, is incredible for most people that need to deal with the development side of it, but apparently this doesn't really fall under those regulations, and I appreciate that, but I hope there's still some consideration for that. And, you know, we have, I think, everybody in this whole area, or anyone who does development, all the power is underground. You don't see power poles going down any of these streets around here, Sutton Drive or O'Brien Drive off, off Barstow Road or Minor Farm Road. So this is now then putting a big structure in the middle of a place where nobody has any, any telephone poles or power poles. So I'm, I'm really concerned about, certainly my impact, because my view is, is all, all directions from Mount Mansfield down to Camel's Hump and beyond, and this is like smack dab in the middle of it all. It's disappointing from my viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Well, hang on, right, oh.
It's okay. I can go after.
All right, either way.
Amy Giudice, I live at 65 Sutton Farm Drive, which is the first orange dot.
And do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I just wanted to kind of give a third nod to the market value, and I, I don't know what the impact would be to the property values that are around there, but I think that there should be some consideration to that. And then I was also curious, a couple of times, several times in the testimony, I heard in this application, I'm asking for two 70-foot towers, or I've outgrown a 30-foot tower, so I want to put up a bigger tower, and I'm wondering what the passing of this application would open the property and surrounding property up to in the future, for when it grows?
Anybody else who wants to put a tower up?
Or anybody else who wants to put a tower up, but like, what happens when 70 feet is outgrown? Will there be? Right. And just kind of, just consideration to like, once you open a can of worms, how much spills out?
Some clarification, is the tower 70 feet or 84 feet?
The lattice, sorry, the, the lattice structure part, it is 70 feet with a 14-foot mass protruding from the top of that 70-foot level.
So the total is 84.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'm at NOAC, I'm at 23 Sheraton Court. You want to swear again?
Yep. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I've been a licensed amateur since 1970. I have a PhD in physics. I taught electromagnetic radiation to electrical engineers at the University of Maryland before I moved to Vermont in 81. And those are just qualifications. The one thing, there's a really nice presentation, the RF safety thing, though, this actually improves, let me say it this way, lowers the RF exposure to people on the ground, not just for the reasons that were brought up by eating antennas further away, but FCC 97 dot 313 requires you to use minimum power to sustain the two-way communication. And so, you know, Zach showed how this improves the range, which means he can lower his transmitter power, and he's actually legally required to do that by that law, so an additional safety factor. So if he doesn't put this up, but moves there, the exposure will actually be worse.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Brian Irwin. I live at 228 Sutton Farm Drive.
And do you swear or affirm that the evidence you give under penalty shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm going to add my, my name to the list of people who would like to at least give our evidence about what the view is like. I mean, it is a large reason that we bought these properties. As I sit on the front porch of my house, if I look straight out, I'm looking at Camel's Hump. If I look straight through the towers, that's, that's Mount Mansfield. So as I look at sort of the Shelburne ordinances, as they're laid out here, that this commission is, is supposed to be enforcing, there are words in here like iconic views that we should be taking into account when we're going to be considering approving these sorts of projects. So I would consider Mount Mansfield an iconic view that will be obscured by these towers. You know, I think that certainly is the sort of thing that will affect property values. Also listed in the ordinance, the things you're supposed to take into account when you're, when you're making these decisions, so I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And when we see the evidence, and I still swear, so. But just, just one question or comment, and, and that's really the date that the photographs were taken of the property to depict the, the tree coverage, so your drone photos that you took?
August.
August, because, yeah, just, just to be clear to the board, there's been a significant amount, and I, I don't disagree with the approach, but there's been a lot of vegetation that's been harvested from around that house, so the vegetation that's depicted in those photographs isn't necessarily representative of what that vegetation state is today. So some of the more recent photographs, I, I think you want to just pay a little bit attention to those as well, so, thanks.
There's less vegetation now?
There's less vegetation.
We were, sorry, I'll comment to that. We were actually onsite, the balloon flow was conducted as they were tree clearing, clearing around the site. It was not the final day that they had cleared, but it was well into the clearing. Okay, thanks. And when you say balloon flow, you're referring to the drone? Sorry, the drone. Test, yeah. Okay. Today, the photo simulations were, or photos were taken. They had cleared most of the surrounding trees, but not all. Okay.
Yeah, sure. I forget your name, but could you just elaborate on what you were saying about the RF?
Legally required to use as little power as you can to sustain your communication. That's literally the law that governs the amateur radio service. So if you've got a poor antenna situation, whether it's the antenna itself, interference, you know, height, if it's close to the ground, you lose effectiveness, as Zach, you know, did a nice job of presenting, then you have to turn your transmitter power up, so.
Oh.
Okay, so, and not only is he moving it further away by putting it up higher and aiming it where you want, but he has to use less power to sustain that, and that's the legal requirement, actually.
Thanks. Do you have any other comments in public? Seeing none. Okay, does, any final comments from the applicant?
Yeah, I realize it's late, so I, I appreciate this opportunity. I'll keep it brief. I guess if I had invisible paint, I would paint these towers invisible. I wish I could do that. I wish I could do that. So, I appreciate the comments from some of my neighbors here that I haven't met in person, and some that I have, and you don't understand where they're coming from. And again, I'm, I view this project as, I've also been interested in this property, and I've lived in Vermont since 99. I love the state and the iconic nature of the state, and the iconic views, and I enjoy hiking, and so I appreciate sort of the aesthetic concerns that I have heard tonight. And, you know, my application, you know, as I've mentioned in a few times, I view it as a compromise. I'm not asking for, you know, a three-element beam for the 160-meter wavelength on a 200-foot tall tower. In my view, these, this proposal is modest compared to many amateur radio operators setups. So, I appreciate where my neighbors are coming from, and I thank them, and thank this board for your consideration of this application.
Thank you. Do I need a what? Oh, first, I was just going to say a final comment from the board. I would really appreciate everybody being here, the applicants, the information provided, the questions and comments, and everybody's interest in this matter, as well as being a part of this TRB process. At this point, we're clearly going to continue this hearing, and we'll do our deliberative session. In the meantime, the, we would just need to agree on a date. I believe there's two options in there, the 12th or the 26th of March?
Yeah, I have a request of preference.
Yeah, that was going to be, making sure we can do it.
I'm going to be away on March 12th.
But the 26th would work, and I think that's the case for Zach and Louis as well.
And is that in alignment with, those are the two options I think we had, yeah? Okay. So, you want to make the motion and use the 26th?
Sure.
Yep, okay. That's, that's basic.
Steve Kendall moved to continue application TEL 20-01 to the 3/26/2020 meeting.
I second that.
All right. Moved by Stephen, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we will continue this hearing to the 26th, and you all are welcome to go, we just have to close out the planning commission thing now.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for attending. Was there any other business to announce or anything?
No, we can just deliberate, and at any time, I don't know if you plan to have a little session on the drone.
I would recommend just a few minutes anyway, but then we can, yeah, so at this case, then I would just, if there aren't any specific things, we could take a motion to adjourn?
Sure. I move that we adjourn.
All right. Moved by Steve, Stephen, seconded by Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion, man.
Thank you, everybody.
We do.